Town of Prescott Valley, regular town council meeting, July 23rd, 2020. Call to order, I'd like to welcome Andy Gambino down, Prescott Valley Bible Church.
Good evening, thank you for inviting me to be a part of this tonight. Let's pray. Well, dear heavenly father, we first pray for our citizens in the community. Lord, the connections that people have with families, friendships, fellowships, and faiths. Lord, we understand that we are people who are created by God, for God. Let us be united in this local community. Lord, we pray for protection for our people. We pray, Lord, that you watch over them and you help each one of us, Lord, to understand that you're in control of all things. Lord, we pray for this leadership, Lord, that you would give them wisdom and that you would guide them and direct them in the decisions that they are going to make. Lord, we know that in you, we can know all things, believe all things, and trust in you. So, Lord, help us to do that tonight. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Please join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Hunt, absent. Councilmember Schumacher?
Present.
Councilmember Packard?
Present.
Councilmember Grossman, absent. Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Nye?
Present.
Mayor Palguta?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving right along, item five is scheduled announcements and presentations, and we will be doing the AMR RP 2020 dividend presentation. Welcome, ma'am.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Heather Waldorf, and I'm your recently promoted risk manager. I thought the best way to make a good first impression would be with sharing some good news. As you know, the Town of Prescott Valley is part of a risk pool for our property and casualty insurance. This year, Arizona Municipal Risk Retention Pool, so AMR RP, which is on here, gave us back a dividend of $361,926. This dividend is a testament of our growing safety culture and loss control efforts, all thanks to the hard work of our employees. In the last three years, we've gone back the equivalent to approximately one and a half years' worth of premiums and dividends. So this is a total of $1.1 million we've received back over the last three years.
How great.
Text for you. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer, but that's all for today.
Get a picture with Toya coming down here. Nicely done, ma'am. And now we'll have a, this'll be certificates for a service award. I don't know who will be presenting for this. Mr. Parker, will you be? You're gonna help out a little bit? All right. We can welcome Mike on down here for five years.
I thank Mike for his five years of service. He's a very good worker, and I wish we had many more of his type. Thank you, Mike.
I want to acknowledge, this is the first time, maybe in my career, that I've seen Woody's head. Mike, if we could clone him, would be one of those people that we do. Mike has a notoriety, and we tease him. He's been on probation more than any other employee during his five-year tenure with the town, and it's not because he's done such a poor job, though I do complain a lot, but rather it's because he's been promoted four times in five years. So each time he gets a promotion, he goes back on probation. So we razz him a little bit in that respect. But a couple of things about Mike that, we were very fortunate to attract him from the private sector. He really came to us with an outstanding work ethic. He started in code enforcement, which is one of the most difficult areas, but he had a background as a professional electrician. So those skills gave him skills to be able to communicate well with the public, and we all know code enforcement's not an easy job. He then went from that to a building safety inspector, at which he excelled to the extent that when a promotion was available to a building inspector and plans examiner combination, he got that job and again went back on probation. So then, most recently, because of his skill sets and an opening, he has become now our senior inspector, and he is in charge of all the inspection services. Of course, Woody's ultimately in charge, but he's in charge of the inspection services on a day-to-day basis, and he excels at that. His demeanor is one of the things I like most. I tell him that he's my favorite, but they're all my favorites. But especially him, because he really does go the extra mile. He communicates well, he's a problem solver. I don't often hear from people that they're having a bad experience with Mike. So with that, Mike, congratulations on five years.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It's been a great pleasure to work for the town. It really has. I've advanced several times, and once again, I'm still on probation. I'll just stay there for the rest of my life, it's okay. But no, I just want to acknowledge and say thank you to everybody, everybody here. That has been a real pleasure. Thank you.
Mike, I just want to say that you truly are the definition of customer service. When people talk about you, I talk to other builders and things, and they just say, you know what, that Mike guy, he is terrific. And I'm sure Woody will attest to this, not many times do you hear inspector and really terrific, or happy to see him, or those two don't usually go together. So that says a lot about you, and just keep doing what you're doing, because you truly are a great asset to our town. Next up is Casey Danner, 20 years.
So Casey was hired as the Town's Information Technology Manager on July 17 of 2000. At that time, he brought to us 10 years of experience in his field, last working as the Technical Support Manager for Baptist Foundation of Arizona, and having graduated cum laude from Grand Canyon University with a Bachelor's of Science degree. In his interview process, he told us with his family residing in Prescott Valley area moving here from Glendale seemed like a good idea. Casey, we agree and believe it was one of the best ideas you've ever had. Through the past 20 years, Casey has supported and assisted the town in advancing our technology systems and capabilities in all departments, which is no small feat. He has a hands-on approach in leading his team that continues to keep his technical skills on point. He literally keeps himself available to us and his customers 24/7, 365 days a year, never further away than a text, call, or email. He is well-known for his can-do attitude and roll-up-his-sleeves hard-work ethic, always willing to go the extra mile in service to others. In September of 2018, Casey was promoted to IT Director and is now responsible for the full operation of his department. Even as the department head, Casey still finds the time to engage with staff at all levels throughout the organization. He regularly attends new employee orientation to meet and greet new staff. He creates work teams to collaborate with staff, such as with the recent redesign of the town's website, and he actively participates in a leadership role on the wellness team. From his infamous John Travolta dance routine at the employee gala, fateful given to blood drives and walk-a-thons, to running alongside our police officers in the law enforcement torch run, Casey is a wellness champ that is an inspiration to us all. Casey, you truly are part of the heart of this organization. You are a skilled professional, trusted friend and coworker. We thank you for your dedication, commitment, and ongoing service to the town and the good of our community. Congratulations on a successful 20 years and counting.
Just to let the record show, Councilwoman Hunt is here for minutes purposes. Go ahead.
Casey, you are like one of the first people I met, and I'm used to having a great IT department, and you are probably one of the best that I've met. Fatima forgot to say that you're a fabulous dancer and a great singer, too. I personally have heard Casey sing at church, and he's really good at it. But anyway, I know you and Denise are great partners, and it shows in your work, your ethics, your heart for helping people, your servant leadership, and I really appreciate you.
You always seem to come through when we need it, and that's important. You know, you're right on top of everything that we've asked you to do, and again, that's important. And you do it in a genuinely pleasant manner, and that's important to me. I appreciate that. You've always been very helpful, and we look forward to many more years being with us. Thank you, Casey.
Yes, Casey, I want to say the same, too. Thank you for all you've done, and I think with 20 years, all the changes you've seen and kept up with, that's gotta be amazing, and you always present everything so simplified, but I know it's not. So thank you for taking something so complicated, and I know how your mind must work, but I'm really glad that your physicality does, too. So you are always right there, right at the head of all the teams, and we really appreciate everything you do.
Well, Casey, every time I talk to you, every time I stop you in the hall and I say, hey, I got a problem here, you take care of the problem right there. I don't have to write a work order up. The only thing I don't...
Don't ask the police about that, because they'd probably tell you differently.
Well, they deserve it, anyway. The only thing is, I think you're an Android guy, correct? Oh, man. Anyway, you helped me with my Apple, so I really appreciate it. In 20 years, I hope we can get 20 more out of you, maybe 15, because you're a good fellow, and I really enjoy talking to somebody that really talks back at us. I really appreciate you very much. Thank you.
Casey, going back in time, when you first came to work here in 20 years ago, we had chaos in our technology, okay, because we had just moved into this building. Telephones didn't work, Richard was taking and issuing permits from his house because the computers weren't working, the voicemail was not working. It was a mess, and it was starting to clear up a little bit, but you have taken it many bars above that and continue to climb in the level of our technology and sophistication. So for that, thank you, and thank you for eliminating the chaos that we had back in 2000.
Well, Casey, everyone applauded you for your wonderful skills that keeps this building and the one next door running. But I have other issues right here. Now, they mention his John Travolta, but what you don't know, he's so darn skilled, he could run a dance studio, and he could make good money. And you know what else? He's a fantastic party planner. Think how many committees you've served on, more than you even remember, because I've served on a bunch of them with you. And you know what? I think he's got a picture of Dorian Gray. Does anybody know who Dorian Gray is? The movie? It's the guy that never aged. I think you've got that portrait in one of your closets. And the reason I want to mention that is because you've kept your enthusiasm, your joy, and I've had to bug you way too many times. And see, he still smiles. I can't even imagine doing without you, Casey. Thank you so deeply.
Casey, I'm sure we can't get into details in regards to all the things that you've done, but as we can all imagine, how much technology has evolved since you started here, and to the level that you've placed us as a town is truly extraordinary. So just keep up the good work, and I know everyone here is truly grateful for what you do.
Yeah, I had a speech prepared, I forgot where I left it, but no, in all seriousness, there's a saying that says that if you enjoy what you do, you'll never work a day in your life. And I can truly say, Karen, don't listen to this, I never work, because I enjoy my job so much. But I have been blessed to work for the Town of Prescott Valley for 20 years. I got this job at a period in my life where things were a little up in the air with my previous job, and it was a really difficult time for me. So when I got this job, it was a true blessing, and I've just been blessed even more over the last 20 years. I'm blessed with a terrific staff. Shelley's here tonight, Sean, I don't know where he is, he's getting a pink slip tomorrow, but Sean and Daniel also. My staff is tremendous, they work hard every day, they make it a joy to manage them. I work with wonderful people in every department. The department heads I work with are wonderful. I've had the honor of working with a wonderful council over the past 20 years. I worked with Kel when Kel was a police officer, so that's been a long time, but every council member I've worked with has been a pleasure to work with, and I truly mean that. So I don't know if it'll be 20 more, but it'll be a while, I can promise you that, and so thank you so much. And if you will indulge me, everybody knows how much of a geek I am if you walk into my office. Usually, I'm walking around the hall with this mask, which is a Captain America mask, but for our picture, I'd like to wear a different mask, if you don't mind.
All right, folks, moving on to council comments. Councilman?
Just as a reminder, but COVID-19's still with us. Wear masks when appropriate, social distance when appropriate, just be aware, this stuff is out there.
Councilwoman? Councilman Anderson? Vice Mayor?
You know, we have a party on a porch event going on all July, and I've really loved the pictures that have been posted. So even in these difficult times, our citizens are getting together and partying on the porch, and I want to thank every single one of them.
Councilwoman?
Thank you, mayor. I want to call everybody's attention to item 8B on the agenda, which is the monthly financial report for June 2020, which is the end of the year, end of the fiscal year. And I just, I want to give a shout out to our businesses and also our residents, because on page two of that report, it says that our sales tax is greater than budgeted, even with the month that we were closed for COVID. So thank you, everybody, for all the shopping locally you've done, and thank you for making our sales tax actually 4.43% higher than what we budgeted, even minus one month. And so since we don't have a property tax, and we pretty much live on sales tax with some other funds from the state, this is really good news for us, and I thank you a lot.
Nice. All right, folks, moving on to item eight, consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Council, we've all had a chance to review it. Here's your opportunity to remove an item, discuss an item, or if not, make a motion. Do I need a motion?
I make a motion that all matters listed. Let's see, okay, will you vote yes or no on this for electronic votes?
I'll vote no, but yes, by voice vote.
Do we need to have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Clerk, please call the vote.
Vice Mayor Nye said, Vice Mayor Nye, yes. Councilmember Hunt?
Yes.
That passes, mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. New business, item 9A, is amended utilities operations, maintenance, and management service agreement. OMI. Sir, welcome.
Good evening, council. Good evening, mayor and vice mayor. Utilities Department is requesting approval for the new Jacobs contract for fiscal year 2021, and I'm going to start off here with some background. CH2OMI, also known as Jacobs, has been providing services to the town since 1993, and the town renewed the early five-year contract with Jacobs last July. And that contract will expire in June of 2025, although we also annually negotiate the changes each year, and we bring those to council for the scope and compensation. For fiscal year 2021, there will be no increases or scope changes due to the uncertain revenues related to the COVID-19 pandemic. We also worked on modifying the contract language, and the anticipated scope fee changes were put on hold, but we do anticipate coming back and revisiting that in October. So on this table, you can see the base fees. Nothing has changed. We are going to move forward with the proposed amendment at the same $3.748 million. And we also have the reimbursable items, wastewater, water repairs, reclaimed water repairs, and so on, and those items are going to stay at the same budget numbers as last year. And we have additional services. These are projects that we are going to have CH2M Hill work on in this next year. We've got several wastewater projects, the total $835,000, and also water projects that total out to $440,000. And these additional services, they're projects that we identify at the beginning of the year, and these things fall into the expertise and purview of CH2M. And the scope is generally flexible, and it can be adjusted as the work progresses. And we have also added, under the water and wastewater categories, contingency funds to address potential or unknown or unanticipated problems that may occur during those projects. So to summarize the contract value, we've got the base fees, the reimbursables, and the special projects, and those total out to approximately $6.9 million. Then, over the past few months, we've been working with Jacobs and our legal department to update the indemnification and liability clauses for better protection for the town, and our contract now is based on an industry standard of care instead of a standard of negligence. And we also updated the list of additional services, which was on the previous slide, and we modified the language relating to the additional services as well, to give the town more flexibility as CH2M works on these projects. So for the future, we're looking at coming back to you in October, and we would like to have CH2M assume management of the wastewater pretreatment program. We would also like to increase contract values for wastewater repairs, magnesium hydroxide and biosolids, and also adjust compensation for CH2M. and bio solids, and also adjust compensation for CH2M. And that is the end of my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Council?
I just want to let the audience and those viewing know that we had a great study session with Jacobs, and they gave a very extensive presentation, so we heard that before. I think they're great partners. You know, I took the sewage treatment plant tour, which I encourage everybody to do. It was actually a date day for my husband and I, and it's pretty, it's okay once you get past the smelly part at the front. But anyway, I could have sworn that those guys were town employees. I mean, that's how cohesive the partnership with Jacobs is, and so, I appreciate them, and hopefully, we have a long, happy life together.
Kudos to Ivan, Stephen in the back there for helping with, kind of breaking down the language a little bit better and cleaning things up a little bit, and can never be too cautious when it comes to being involved in such a contract. So, Ivan, nice job. Stephen, nice job.
Mr. Mayor, I really have to give most of that credit to Stephen. So, thank you for all of those hours of discussions, and we appreciate also that OMI was willing to work with us on that language.
Great. With that being said?
A motion?
Need a motion?
I have a motion to approve the amended utility operation, maintenance, and management service agreement with the CH2MOMI. For electronic vote.
Can I have a second?
I'll make a second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
Vice Mayor Nye?
Yes.
That passes, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 9B, additional Acela order agreement. Mr. Parker?
Thank you, Mayor, council. Proposed is purchase of five additional software licenses for our new software. The reason being is that we have exceeded our timeframe. Actually, we are implementing more quickly that new software, which is Acela Automation, and instead of holding back, we've elected to acquire the additional five licenses earlier instead of waiting until the latter part of this fiscal year. As you know, this was budgeted as part of this fiscal year. We previously identified it in a three-year period of time. We're finding that because of COVID, people are focusing more closely on getting the job done, and we will probably be going live January 1st. Couple of other things, just as a reminder, the council asked me to work through a fee increase about three years ago to pay for this, and just as a reminder again, we went through a fairly rigorous process to identify where the funds would come from, from existing user funds, from administrative fees, and we increased administrative fees across the board at 7%. That meant things like variance applications went from $50 to $52.50. So, it wasn't a huge jump, but through the collection of those dollars, we were able to pay for ultimately this implementation, the software, and then continue to sustain that dollar figure to maintain the systems into the future, and that's something I think is a good thing. I'd respond to any questions you may have.
Council, any questions for Mr. Parker? Not.
I can make a motion if we have no questions. Motion to approve the additional Acela order agreement in the amount of $98,143.20 with your Acela Automation Civic Platform by voice and electronic vote.
Can I have a second?
I'd like to make a second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
Vice Mayor Nye?
Yes.
That passes, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Parker, I believe you're up for upgrade Selectron IVR software?
Yeah, just before I go on, I wanted to recognize the administrative supervisor in community development, Vicky Anderson. She's the real reason why we are ahead of schedule on implementation of these software items. As you might expect, as technologies have changed, they run off of different platforms. The IVR system we currently has services our old software platform, and in order to make it seamless with the new automation, we have to enter into a contract with the IVR new system in order to be able to have them be compatible. There are a lot of things that will be part of this. People will be able to call in on their telephones and render the outcomes of inspections as opposed to necessarily going to the job, which is a benefit for our customer, not having to actually drive to the job site. Inspectors can communicate via this new IVR telephonically, leaving a message in there so when the contractor picks it up, it says, "There are some minor correction items as follows, bing, 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 bing. We're not going to have you do a reinspection, but we're going to look at them when we come back out there again so that everybody's clear, and we continue to accelerate our building inspection processes." We would ask for your approval.
Councilwoman?
I just want to say that I think this is a great idea because it improves our customer service, and so, that's great. Thank you, and most importantly, thank you to Vicky, because I had some questions for her, and she was so smooth in answering them, and I appreciate that.
Appreciate that a great deal. I'll pass that along.
Councilman?
I just wanted to thank you for your efforts in taking to heart the need to raise the fees. I know that wasn't an easy process for you. It never is for anybody, but it was important for us not to have to use general funds to take care of those software needs. We saw that coming, and I know you appreciated that as well, and it was important for us to ensure that the people that were benefiting from the updated software were also the people that were paying for that updated software. So, you're the first one that's come before us that had to do that, and we're seeing the results of that now, so I wanted to thank you for that.
Well, and I appreciate that, councilman, because we have seen yet another uptick in permits, and that's because the Jasper project has come on, and if you drive around town, a lot of the infill lots are under construction as well, so that's been a really good thing. Of course, we really enjoy our customer with Universal Homes in Granville. They click along uniformly every month at 30 permits a month, so we're grateful for that as well.
Richard, I just want to just say that you set the bar high for our local agencies around Prescott Chino, the county. What we do in the building department, I'm sure you already know this, but it's not the same everywhere, and we put together a good product, and it is truly customer-service-based, and I can say that from personal experience, not just from the outside looking in, but you guys do an amazing job.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
With that being said, can we get a motion?
I'd like to make, oh, go ahead, Lauren. I'd like to make a motion to update Selectron IVR software, Acela Automation Civic Platform conversion, which will improve our customer service by electronic vote.
I'll do a second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
Vice Mayor Nye?
Yes.
That passes, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 9D, Arizona Game and Fish Department Heritage Fund Grant. Mr. Woody?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Things have been going along swimmingly tonight, so I thought I'd bring a fisheries project to you. These are, yeah, I know, I'm sorry. Not, but I know it's really bad. As many of you may well know, our Arizona Heritage Fund program is a competitive program throughout all agencies in the state of Arizona. We are very much an active participant in partnership with Game and Fish with our fisheries program. A few years back, council agreed to the community fishing program in which we have enhanced stocking levels of trout and catfish, not only both in Fane Park, but also the two lakes that are at Mountain Valley Park, affectionately known as the Urban or Yavon Pie Lakes. The grant application that we made was to enhance our infrastructure, and this was to give us products on the shelf that also then complied with the fishery needs that Game and Fish presented to us for healthy habitats that we have out there for sustainability purposes. So, the beauty of this is $20,000 in money granted to us by the Heritage Fund, if so approved, and then the matching will come through what is already budgeted with monies that are in the Parks Division, along then with staff time, volunteer efforts, all of those things that put this in operation. So, the results that you will find is, if Mother Nature impacts us, a mechanical issue comes about, we literally have equipment on the shelf, get those technical folks involved. We literally can pick and play all at a moment's notice where we've not had that opportunity before, and it's meeting then those specifications and recommendations from Game and Fish for good times to be had by all. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I think this is wonderful return on investment of your $5,000 on an annual basis with $20,000 in available monies.
Brian, I just, I don't know if many people know, or I'm sure people know, but there's people that don't know about actually going down by the urban lakes and fishing. You'll go by there, I mean, I drive by there probably 10 times a day, and there's at least 15, 20 people out there fishing at any given time, and if you haven't seen the joy of a child catching his first fish, then you're not living. So, it's truly an amazing opportunity.
And the fun part is when one of our young guests, about yay tall, come and visit, and they're having to hold their pitcher of their fish up around their chin, because there are some very sizable catfish there. That's a pretty exciting moment.
It truly is. So, I encourage everyone out there, even if you're not a fisherman, just go out there, just walk around, and you'll be able to see some pure enjoyment going on out at our park. So, thank you for that. Vice Mayor?
I would just like to add the mayor's comment. I go by there a lot at night, and there's fishermen's at night.
Yes, ma'am.
That's how well utilized it is.
There's no other comments? Can we get a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion. A motion to accept the grant from the Arizona Game and Fish Department and approve the related agreement in the amount of $20,500 for Lake Goration, the projects in the town's fisheries by electronic and voice vote.
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
Vice Mayor Nye?
Yes.
That passes, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Woody. Item 10, comments from the public. Consideration and discussion of general unscheduled comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council need not request permission in advance. Any such remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any member thereof. Such remarks shall be limited to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the mayor. At the conclusion of the unscheduled comments, individual members of the council may respond to the item addressed at the discretion of the mayor, or they may ask that the town manager to review the matter or ask that the matter be placed on a future agenda. With that being said, folks, we have a few people out there, and a gentleman raised his hand, so come on down. Welcome, sir.
This is unrehearsed. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Just state your name. I've only been here about two years, and as just normal citizens, we so enjoy living here. You just don't realize all the things that go on here to make this town click like it does, and sitting here at this meeting tonight and hearing everything that goes on. I was telling Mary, there's a lot of really smart people that live here and work to make this town click like it does, and we really appreciate what you do for us.
Sir, thank you. Could you just state your name for the record, sir?
Craig Hunter, and my wife, Mary.
Hi, Mary.
She tells me what to say most of the time.
You're not alone, sir. Oh, Citizens Academy graduates, right there, so, great. Anyone else that would like to come down and speak? That being said, we'll move on to Item 11. Get a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
Vice Mayor Nye?
Yes.
Mayor Poguta?
Yeah.
That passes, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Thanks, everyone, for coming out. Have a great night.